On motion carries. I'm gonna look at consent agenda. And approval of the bills, there were a couple of things I found, uh, the health and safety minutes had great graphic. Listed twice, I've already asked the girls to correct that. And the community calendar shows, um, planning and zoning for the sixteenth, that was changed to the twenty-third. Because of M E A, so I've asked them to update the website with that information. Are there anything, anything else that anybody would? Like to add, change? If not, I'll exchange a motion or consent.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and pay the bills of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda and approve paying bills of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, first item of business, the, uh, sign welcome to Osakers, Act number one twenty-four. Minnesota Department of D O T has a permit for the entrance sign in Osakers that will be expiring in February of twenty twenty-six. Um, it is my understanding the council discussed some changes to that sign last November. Um, but I haven't seen anything more on that or heard anything more on that. The sign on highway twenty-seven on the way to the interstate has all that was leading that have been corrected and put back in place. Um, clerk Jacobson received the call from Minnesota D O T stating that they will be renewing our permit and will include both welcome signs. One on the way to the interstate and the other on the east side between highway twenty-seven and Lake Street. Um, if they make any changes to those signs, now is the time before the permit renews. Um, both signs have been looked at and updated as needed. But is there any changes we want to make to that sign before?
Yeah, I don't know, cosmetic is a lot what they want. If you're gonna read what they want, they're in their open time, so. You guys have looked at and learned after with them, everybody else has discussed it?
And if we don't have, why make any changes to that, we do have a resolution that we need to approve to send into the D O T. Uh.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash. Sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. Uh, for a limited use permit. Twenty-one thirteen dash zero zero five one with the Minnesota D O T. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Project three sixty-eight, Excel Energy Franchise. Excel Energy Franchise Agreement will need to be renewed. It expired in September of twenty twenty-five. Uh, our city attorney Flattery and Hood and Excel have been working on a draft agreement. The final draft is attached that I'm sure you've all reviewed. Um, this agreement is required because Excel provides power in Osakers and they use public right of way for their power service. And the city is allowed to draft an additional ordinance to change them or charge them a franchise fee here. Currently do not have that in place. And just doesn't know, we can add that after we have done this, correct?
Yeah, that's what they prefer. It's a separate meeting.
Okay. Um, I will be reading, um, a summary publication. Um, it's supposed to be read at two meetings. I will read it tonight and we can make a motion to waive the second reading. City of Osakers ordinance number one forty-four public, summary publication. The city council of the city of Osakers, Minnesota has adopted ordinance number one forty-four and ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-nine. Establishing an updated electrical franchise agreement between the city of Osakers and Northern State's Power Company, a Minnesota corporation. This ordinance grants Northern State's Power Company the right to construct, operate, repair, and maintain electrical transmission and distribution facilities within public rights of way and public grounds in the city of Osakers for a period of twenty years. The agreement provides for the continued ser- delivery of a reliable electrical service to residents and businesses within the city limits. It defines the rights and responsibilities of both parties. Key provisions include franchise term and purpose establishes a twenty-year franchise authori- authorizing Excel Energy to use city rights of way to provide electrical energy for public and private use. Regulation and oversight requires compliance with all app- ac- applicable city ordinances, permits, and reasonable regulations governing the placement and maintenance of electrical facilities. Restoration and maintenance requires the company to restore any disturbed public grounds or streets to their prior condition following installation or repair work. Relocation of facilities, outline procedures and cost responsibilities for relocating electrical facilities to accommodate city improvements or federally federally funded projects. Tree trim- trimming, authorizes the company to trim trees and vegetation as needed to maintain safe and reliable electric service subject to city oversight. Indemnification and insurance requires the company to indemnify and hold the city harmless of claims related to its operations and to maintain liability insurance of at least two million dollars per occurrence and five million dollars aggregate, naming the city as an additional entity. Franchise fee option provides that the city may at a future date adopt a separate franchise fee. Ordinance requiring the company to collect a franchise fee on behalf of the city. Annual coordination requires an annual meeting between the city and the company to discuss system reliability, plant projects, and infrastructure improvements. Dispute resolution and legal provisions establishes procedures for resolving disputes, amending the agreement, and ensuring continued continuity of service should a new franchise not be in place upon expiration.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number one hundred and forty-four. And an ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-nine. Updating the renewing the electric franchise agreement between the city of Osakers and Northern State's Power Company or Excel Energy and waive the second reading.
We have a second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve ordinance number one forty-four and ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-nine, updating and renewing the electric franchise agreement between the city of Osakers and Northern State's Power Company, Excel Energy, and waive the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Then would we approve the summary publication so that way we can publish in the papers the summary versus the whole, um, ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the summary publication for ordinance number one forty-four, amending ordinance number fifty-nine electric franchise agreement between the city of Osakers and Northern State's Power Company or Excel Energy Center.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve summary publication for ordinance number one forty-four, amending ordinance number fifty-nine. Electric fran- franchise agreement between the city of Osakers and Northern State's Power Company, Excel Energy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Project number sixty dash one, ordinance rental. Um, E D A has been discussing, um, or at the September meeting discussed and requested that we consider, uh, implementing a rental ordinance. Um, from reading through all of this, I see that you guys had started, or the council had started something in two thousand nineteen. Uh, but it did not come to fruition at that time. Um, I was looking through it, but there was a lot in there to digest. So I don't know if we want to continue looking at this and talk about it further at another meeting? Do we want to table this right now? Um, or if we want to move it to the workshop? Um, your input here is greatly appreciated.
I don't know. I mean, what was, um, what was the nonsense when Minnesota English played this on us to?
No, the E D A.
I mean, E D A.
Um, just that all the surrounding towns are doing something and you know, I'm sure the majority of our rental owners is, you know, are fine. But are we letting things slip through the cracks?
Is this something that we should potentially have it run through planning and zoning in case there's anything else that we would want
I'm gonna.
our gentleman from Sourceville to look at?
I'm gonna refer you to random, well, no, I, I, I just need your input right away. Um, uh.
The only reason why I ask that is because it says it was done in nineteen, so from nineteen till now, if anything would have changed. Or do you guys feel pretty comfortable that you looked over everything?
Cause in fact, when we discussed it at E D A, we had none of this information that we have here today.
Sure.
So I mean, it was just.
I can give you a little background. This is Kelvin and I talked about it because this was in nineteen, this did come up as a discussion point. As far as some places in town that maybe have some car rental and some issues that the police department has to deal with, but then kind of ties their hands because we don't have a rental ordinance. And I think planning zoning probably brought it to light regarding our property over in the corner here where there's uh, commercial property and she wants to rent it out to somebody that's living there and there's not as much teeth in our ordinance to, I guess, make them not do those things. If you have a rental ordinance that specifies where rentals can be, it's a little bit easier for them to enforce. And I think that's part of like planning zoning brought up. Kelvin can talk to his side with the police department. They have issues that come up and unless they're elderly or a child, there's not much that can be done.
So what we found is that when we talk to the people or we can't get hold of the people that live there when we have issues. Um, we talk to the city clerks and they tell us that the person that owns it is down in cities or St. Cloud or Fargo or and then they don't respond to phone calls. So we really don't know who is supposed to be living there at all. And then this would help us, if you're gonna rent out a place, we should know who's living there so we can get in contact with them if we need to. And and that's, that's one of the main parts of it is we just don't know who that what's happening is people are renting and it's becoming a slump. And she's right, there's a lot of good rentals. People that control a lot of good property in this town will do a good job, but we have a lot of rentals and some aren't being well held. So what happens is people rent and then they move on and they sublease to somebody else and sublease to somebody else. And so the guy, the person that owns the property really have no idea who's living there. And they're destroying the property and they come up once a year and all of a sudden, it's my problem. So. The other issue that comes up is there's some apartments that don't actually adhere to standard safety requirements. No windows in their bedrooms, that kind of stuff. And we can't go in there and group that because without an ordinance, we have no right to do that. That was some of the big issue. Some of them are elderly too that probably need to, that escape alternatives more. And without this kind of ordinance, we have no way to, this is again, teeth to do anything about it. So these people are, and we, because we're aware of a few people that are probably with some power apartments.
And that's the biggest fight we're facing with people that own good rental properties is they don't want any more fees or regulations attached to their properties. They're doing the right thing, but if we have to go in and inspect these rental properties before they get certificate to rental, it is gonna add, add a cost probably to that. So we are penalizing the bad and also the good. So and that was a big footback the last time I went through this, but it tells me like there's, might, might be some alternatives to the good people giving them a little bit of a break on fees versus the people that aren't helping us out. So. So I kind of liked that when I read through it again. So that, that was a good change to fit across. That was the E D A's concern.
No, 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 I were looking for any approval ordinance marketing, you're taking spots and moving forward discussion and we having some rental property owners in here and give their insight and and move through this winter, I would say.
And justice on, uh, E D A, he didn't seem to think it needed to go to the planning and zoning. I don't know, Kyle, if you have an opinion. We think it's a city thing. I mean, we can, we can assist, but we don't, we don't think it's planned, so I think so. I think running it through Mr. Jones at Sourceville is not a horrible idea. Okay. So we want planning zoning review in September, yeah, that's for sure. Just, and you're holding up.
No, absolutely. So I'm, I'm just hoping like if we are doing a workshop at the end of the month, if you can take a look at it.
I think it's Thursday, so.
Planning and zoning meeting.
Final. I mean, we discussed at that point if Steve's got any ideas or he can get back to us before.
I mean, that's true. My biggest thing, he just, he is so good at what he does. And if he can find anything else that he may be seeing that he's run across. I think that would be wonderful. But yeah, otherwise, no, I one hundred percent agree with you guys. It's a great thing. They've talked about it quite a bit at planning and zoning as well of just knowing who's building someone to who and accountability.
Okay, then we'll just go ahead and move this over to planning and zoning, just for their insight, um, from Mr. Jones. And if anyone at the planning zoning has anything they would like to add, they can come back with. Alright.
I think maybe when we come back to it with the joint, maybe, maybe just sending out all the that we know, so they know for sure it's ungenerally.
Okay, go to staff. Mr. Troy.
Hi.
Good evening.
So, um, just a couple of points on things that have been going on, are good, good in there, you know, that, um, our two bloody bar bars that we did for the early Vikings events went really good. The first one, yeah, absolute full bar, where people were walking in in a seating. Um, I had a seating for the second game. Um, that one was a little less than full, but I also think that was part because there's so many places that were trying to do stuff that people that maybe came the first time said, hey, let's try this part's got something going on too. But it was, we were still at, I'd say we were probably ten to fifteen people sure to be involved. So both those events went really good. Um, the, uh, quarter drop game for the Vikings tickets has gone in, has gone really well. We actually have, um, half the money towards the cost of the tickets already collected. So the state was from having to front that upfront, which is good. People are liking it. The radio station picked it up. Um, it's become a fun thing in the bar. I think I'm actually gonna extend it into wild tickets and maybe tier rules tickets and stuff. This, this went through kids. Because it ends up getting to be like a competition and people like, I'm gonna do it. And then somebody gets one in like, well, I'm gonna try to get one in. So it's been a fun thing to get going around that way. Um, bargain will be starting this Saturday. Um, I had to put a little hole in that, so I had trouble finding somebody that would do it. And I, the only way I could make that happen was to bump from thirty to fifty dollars, um, to call bargain on Saturdays, which I think is not a big issue considering that there's other places that are paying more for that for bingo and raffle people and all that. We might also, I haven't still haven't phoned anybody for raffle. Um, I know we can use some staff, but that ends up being kind of an issue too, just because they're already there and now we're pulling them in for like two hours on a day where they don't work and they're already part-time. So I'm trying to find community. I reached out. If anybody knows any communities that would like to raise money. Um, I can do a sign sheet. And be happy to have them come and they can take that, they come, sell it. We paid them the money for selling. Or call and bargain if there's a night where Josh can't do it. And we can have them collect the money and they can take it to their organization and use it as a donation. Um, would like to do that too. Um, for the, the down, one of the downsides is I know I've been talking about this new computer system. They're having a little bit of trouble migrating from our archaic system that we've been using to the new system. I have a meeting tomorrow at, at eight fifty to go over and discuss what that looks like and try to get a new B T A. That will establish. I was kind of hoping for Wednesday, Thursday, go live this week. And I know that's not gonna happen. So we're probably looking, uh, the biggest thing is, is that the Excel, um, spreadsheets or C V S that you would normally export from, the data that we can export from the system is not the data they need to transfer in. So we have to use a app, Soligo, that can take the hard data and then transfer it into data that we can use. So it's taking some extra steps. Um, that's all I have on that. And then I know we've talked a few times about the new camera system. We did get approved for a two thousand dollar grant. Um, that's the first sheet on here. And then what I did put behind it is the bids for parking lot, just if you guys have it. We don't need to discuss that tonight. Obviously, there's a lot on the agenda, but I want you to have it so you can look at it. The second bid is first ones from already, the second bid is from Mark Lee. Um, the second bid does not include the tearing up or replacing of the concrete or the first bid does. Um, and I don't have the bids for the concrete because I'm still waiting for one person to do that because the project is still falls in that category. We have two concrete bids now, two accompany Mark Lee's bid so that we can get that rolling forward. So I just wanted to give you guys that. We are looking at, it was originally twelve nine, twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for the new camera system. And it's the same type of system that we have here. The company, Allstate Communications on the top is the company that fit the install, but they were bought out from Arby's. So it would be the same system the city physically has. And then we did get approved for the two thousand dollar grant to use towards that also. So that would bring it down to ten thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. I know we talked previously, um, and everybody, I know we got an approval that yes, we should move forward with that. Um, I just wanted to get the money cost in front of you so we can probably get a final. Whether that's tonight or the next meeting is probably. And I do have, I think, if you look at that first bid, that for morality, so that includes everything, I think we're gonna be within twenty-ish thousand with the cost on the other bid, but there's also some things in there with Phil that are not on that bid. They can even open to with Mark Lee's company. They left it open as far as, um, what they might need because when that concrete comes out, there's gonna be still echoes and maybe that's already figured in the first bid too. So they're gonna be a lot closer than what you're seeing right now, which is a big discrepancy. But if you figure, we got at least thirty to thirty-ish, thirty to thirty-five thousand just in concrete work. So that'll bring that other bit up. And when I get a second bid on that, I will give you guys the information, but I just wanted you to have it in front of me so we actually have some numbers and because of all the people that are wondering whether B F has done it or still not. So I want to make sure we're addressing this.
Are we okay with approving years, updating cameras?
I'd say yes.
I'll make a motion to approve purchasing the camera system for the twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, including the two thousand dollar grant from Sourceville.
So sorry. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the updating of the cameras at the liquor store with Allstate Communications for twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Um, and we have a grant of two thousand dollars from Sourceville to lower that number. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
No, the only question I have also that I wanted to bring up was that one time we talked about some of the the gambling rental we've got our, the next round.
It, it's already have, this is, we've done it two months already.
Conversation.
Okay. Okay. Uh, yes, we have talked to Troy about that. Um, that half of his rent money will be going to the E D A.
Yeah, my only stipulation on that is that it hits the bottom line of the liquor store first before it's transferred or to the.
Well, I think it has to.
I think.
It gets deposited as.
Well, it could be, it could be, well, when they originally did it, when this was originally done back when they first had it, we had, the liquor store had days where they were running pull tabs behind the bar. And then you had pull tabs being, to my understanding from talking with people, you had pull tabs that were being run from the booth. And there was a small percentage from the booth that stayed at the liquor store, but then the rest of that percentage went to the funds that the city was trying to use. And the other three days that we had sales behind the bar, which was Monday through Thursday, actually Monday, Tuesday was a third case of four days, that was all still revenue for the bar. So this would be slightly different in the fact that all the revenue comes from the bar and they were pulling fifty percent away at this time as the eight dollar amount. Yes, and that's, that's what Mr. needs.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're totally on the same page. And then the only other question I have is, um, so year-to-date, you know, I'm gonna ask you because I put on the, we're about one thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars, seventy, seventy-some cents short year-to-date. Is there anything you can do that would help?
Um, you're short on.
Pull tab, pull tab short.
Overall.
On the.
Yeah, overall for we getting year-to-date.
Year-to-date.
So.
So year-to-date, like that's one thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. That's not coming into the city because like it's taken off.
Right, because of the that's, yeah, because you're saying because of the errors as far as.
Right, yes.
Yeah, as far as what are you looking, can you say what can we do about that? What are you looking at?
I'm asking you, what can we do to get that number less is what I'm saying. And I only ask it because I'm, I'm not picking on you, but I bring it up at every every year because that's, that's a big number. And we as council have to be accountable to the public and this lot of money. And I just
It is a lot of.
I feel like we need to have a comment as to why.
Sure. I mean, it is a lot of money and I get what you're saying. I think if you look at there are months where it's better and months where it's not. Also, the situation on some of that is too, is that when we're closing boxes, they're not always closed on the month when it happens. And there can be money that's positive at one box that flows into the next month. So that's part of that too, where the overall number is. But if you take the overall number and look at that, we're still at, I would be wondering about, I haven't done the math, but I can if we need to. I would say that we're probably still under ten percent.
No, I would.
Overall, and that.
You're, you're just honestly missing my point. My point is that I make this point every year and I realize, I realize that, um, this is your first, first year of doing this, not the liquor store. I just bring it up every year because people ask about it and it I'm not coming down on you personally. I just, it's a big number and
It is.
I just feel like we need to recognize it as a council to be more responsible for that, is all I'm saying.
And I would have no problems having conversations with those people that want to know about it too. But at the same time, you see it as a big number, it really isn't in comparison to other bars. So.
And that's fine. I'm not, we're not gonna argue about it. All I'm saying is the number is the number. That's all I'm saying.
And I agree. And we've done, I, I think we've done ones where it's been better. We've kept the number lower than some of the others, the other situations previously, I do believe, but I don't have that number in front of me. And we have put some things in place also, and we've been talking about getting the computer system, but that's been put on hold with our D A P association at this period of time. Hopefully, we can get something at the beginning of the year. And that can make some changes too, but there's, we could also look at a new way of tracking it too. So maybe we can catch the stuff that's falling into the next month that would have fixed the box in the first month. So the numbers come out. But I, we're looking at something where most other bars are happy with a thirty percent loss. And we're trying to.
That's not us. That, we, I'm, I'm not gonna argue about it anymore. We, we.
I'm not arguing.
No, I'm just saying. This is my point. I see your point. And, and the discussion about it honestly because we're not seeing the same thing. So I get other, other, other towns.
I'm open to suggestions if you have a way to say.
I mean, there are months that there's zero and that's, that's incredible. And there, but there are some months that it's three hundred and twenty-two dollars up and that's a lot of money in one month.
Right, so, but some of those months where it's zero, it probably would have been a hundred and fifteen, but because the boxes didn't close until the following month, you're eating it on the next month. That's what I'm saying.
But it's still then the same number, whether you're, whether you're long or you're short, it still ends up like one month will catch up to the next.
Correct. I'm not saying that the number at the bottom isn't correct.
Yeah.
For the overall. I, I get what you're saying. I'm just saying, I don't think you're ever gonna run into a situation where every month is gonna be zero. It's almost impossible to run that.
Well, Troy, maybe you could, if you have those months where you're over, in minor sentence, if you're over, they don't give you an over just.
Like, we send it in, no?
So maybe if there's months when it was zero, you could say, you know, we closed this box. This one was short by a hundred dollars, but then when we did the next box. Month was zero, but we were over by a hundred dollars, but they kept it, if you could. Maybe get some of that information, and maybe Dr. Power would.
I could, yeah, we could try, we're trying.
What it is.
Yeah, we're trying to track it internally. But there's still, when they do their own audits, there are mistakes that happen on the paperwork. Because it's all hand-done. So, we, I know, we have a spreadsheet, we're following it, we're doing our best on that, and there are shifts now too that. Are better when certain people are working, just because they take more time to do stuff, and that's training, which I've been working on. So, I mean. You said, I want it to be better, but. Physically, I don't ever see it being zero, and I know that that's probably what you want. And what we all want, if we can make that happen.
Okay.
Okay. But I will definitely look into trying to find a better way to catch everything, so we can at least talk to it a little bit different, and then maybe we can make even tighter. Parameters and positions for that moving forward.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Project seventy-three, first responders. Karen, if you want to come up.
I would like to get approval to bring Amanda Kramer on to the first responder team, pending a background check. Um, she's already EMR certified, and has past experiences, um, being on an EMR team. So, here is some copy of her resume, if you want to go on that, I would just need to get approval to move forward with that.
If you want to sit in that chair.
Sure.
Because.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah, I do, you would like.
This is a little crazy, it's put us all down. Oh, funny.
Well, that's wonderful, wonderful, but there's been a lot of.
Yeah, that's such a good feeling.
I'll make a motion to approve Amanda Kramer.
Also.
Having background.
Motion is made and seconded to approve Amanda Kramer as, um, new courser's commander, uh, pending background check. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Do you want this back?
Very much.
Nothing else for us, Sharon?
Nope, that's it.
Project seventy-six, please department.
Hey, how you doing?
I'm doing great, wanna come sit in the chair?
Oh, really?
Congratulations on all the new vests.
Yes.
All very interesting.
It's good to see them, just guess that again.
Yeah, I don't know if the council is aware, um. Those machines employees, uh, donated, um, ten thousand dollars to shield one six. Six sixteen?
Six one six.
Six one six. Um, and. Donated to City of Osakers, so we got four, uh, brand new vests for the police department.
Well, vests are, they are big, but also, because they're, they're expensive and they top of the line, with the rifle plates, they come with them are super, and then. The FSC demo, it's amazing. It's good.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven to allow, uh, Matthew Elf. Cory Singer, um, be part of the PRA.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I would like counsel approval to bring them to the next competition this morning. Certainly. And.
Um, resolutions have been. Made and seconded to approve. Approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six to enroll Matthew Elf in Police Para with City of Osakers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Resolution to approve. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven to enroll Cory Singer. In Para, Police Para with the City of Osakers, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Uh, good news, we have found our truck. It is someone that kind of, you know, states waiting to be shipped. Here. I just got a call from vendors today, so they have found it, it's just. The people that transport these things are waiting for a decent amount of vehicles, like, they'll be going a little bit wherever they can move, work their time, so. So, maybe next month.
And we're supposed to be here now, yeah?
Yeah, right.
See, next month, one month. And is there anything else, I know that overtime was a little bit high, but I know the case of Osakers was in there, and I knew you were short of staff. So, um, it got me a little bit crazy, but.
Overall, yes, the overtime did get, uh, out there, and then on-call was high too. Um, and unfortunately, with that month, it was, uh, it was impressive, and the case of Osakers went amazing, so. I'm glad we had, we had on that.
As I say, part of the on-call, or the callouts, was you trying to alleviate some of your overtime load too, correct?
Say that one more time.
Part of the callouts were during your normal shift, where you took time off to try and alleviate the overtime hours.
You're, you were, I think, is what I'm going for, is my on-call time.
Yeah, exactly.
My on-call time is a little bit higher, because I've been taking time off, so like, this meeting tonight is, because I took two hours off, so, yeah. So the on-call times, it, it, it's better, but, yeah. Because I'm, I'm not getting.
But now we should be pretty much, with the few you part-timers, we will be in a lot better.
They will, they should be through the FTO. Just a little bit into, um, probably the first part of the number, I'm hoping to, but I'm trying to work them into my shift and rear shift to get them.
Is the tricky portion.
Yeah, yeah. As the F, as the FTO certified guy, working the day shift, it, it's put, it puts the training into a different level.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, thank you for doing the second part of hours, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, it was a, it was a, it's a common sense request, so.
I just have one comment, I was talking with the gal in the office, and it was just a couple of comments on how the transition has gone with you as the interim chief, she had. A lot of positive trainings to say, so thank you for stepping up and doing that. As much as I question other things, when positive comments are warranted, I will pass.
I was gonna say, so, it's always nice to have, to share that once in a while, okay?
Kids do enjoy seeing you grab their own truck.
They're like, oh, this is a truck, aren't these just our new truck, I'm like, it's not me.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to make sure that, since this was leaving, we put the miles on. Uh, any more questions I can answer?
Nothing for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for talking, please.
Project seventy-four dash thirteen, fire department, fire relief.
I'll cover the fire department stuff, and then Kyle will step up and cover the relief.
Sounds wonderful.
So as you see for last month, we didn't have any calls, prior to that, we had nine, and then around three already this month, so. It's kind of a roller coaster. Um. We'll be going out, hopefully, the end of October now, um, to get. The valves replaced on our one tanker pumper. It's got about a week out of service, to get it replaced, we were gonna do it, and then the sock center having a water tower down for maintenance. We're on their auto aid schedule, in case they get a big fire, so we said we'll keep it in down, and. So it'll be the end of the month, maybe even in November, when everything kind of dies down, then we'll run it down, so I go to Wilmer to get serviced. So I'll be out for about a week, um, our new trailer did arrive last week. We did have it up there last week for the fire prevention open house, with both irons on it, strapped on, we actually had it out last week for one call. Right away, after, only been on the trailer three days or whatever, having both all on there, so. That's here, um. Fire prevention open house was last week Wednesday, I think we had total, all the firefighters there throughout the course of the day, we had sixteen for the primary of the day up at the school. From eight o'clock in the morning till one thirty, and then a few split out here and there with their jobs. Um, served about two hundred and fifty hot dogs, give or take, some people didn't eat, so. It was a good city turnout, so. And then myself and Alan, who'll be going up to Duluth, we're leaving on Wednesday for the Dallas County Chiefs, or not Dallas County. Uh, MSFCA State Fair Chiefs Conference, so we got classes, we go up there Wednesday night, we got. Um. Orientation kind of sign-in, register, and then Wednesday, they've got an opening supoio. And then a vendor show, look at all different truck manufacturers. Tools, that kind of stuff, and then classes Friday, and then memorial service Friday night, and then supoio Saturday morning around there, I mean. So, we're going up there, two of us, so. Questions on that?
I was scared.
I'll, I'll cover the relief.
Council members, have a meeting. Uh, I have brought with me a model resolution, uh, we had a meeting with Mayor Dorsec and council member Backus two weeks ago.
Yeah.
End of. September, uh, to discuss our relief association, and, uh, after discussing the fact that we are currently at. One hundred and seventeen percent funded, uh, in that account, uh. And since then, the city's twenty thousand dollar, um.
Yes.
Uh, deposit went in, uh, we got the information with on the nineteen, so it was after that meeting that that went in. Uh, and then we have sent over paperwork to, uh, take twenty-five thousand on our own relief account, to put into the pure account. Uh, it's our request, uh, after talking to the, uh, mayor and, uh, representative Backus, that we bump from fifty-six hundred. To sixty-six hundred per year, uh, for relief. Uh. That's what put us at ninety-nine point five six percent. But that was before the twenty thousand of the city, and then the twenty-five thousand of our own, so we're gonna be right back to about a hundred percent, if not over, even with that thousand dollar off. So.
And, just to. Something that I learned in speaking with, with the, the guys at the fire hall. Um. Probably will never happen, but should something happen that we disbanded. The fire department. Um, if you look at page four of this report, where it shows you a hundred and seventeen percent. If we disbanded the police department today, right now. We are at a surplus of two hundred and ten thousand, Para would keep that. That would not come back to the city, that's the reason that Backus and Laura and I decided to let them bump it to sixty-six, or request that they bump it to sixty-six. Because you want to stay as close to a hundred percent as possible. So it was. We were, we were okay with the fact that them bumping it up. Or request for the bump.
And then we did get our report, uh, just as of nine thirty of twenty twenty-five, um, and in one year's time, we had almost two hundred thousand dollars in investment gains in one year. Besides the twenty thousand at the city, and the money that we invest as well, so. The move to Para has been a very beneficial. Thing for our department and its members, and, um, people have made sacrifices in the past to get us to this point, and we're just looking to keep it set up and moving forward for. The future.
Um, how soon do you need that resolution, would we have to do that by, how can we do it, November meeting?
I believe I give you this now, it gets approved at the November meeting, and then Angela would. Uh, send it in in December, it has to be done before the first of the year, correct?
Yep, before the end of the year.
Before the end?
Before December thirty.
Yep.
Twenty twenty-five.
So, yeah, we can get the resolution, take care of it at the November meeting, and. Go forward with it.
Yep, and then I will leave the model resolution, because I think we forgot that last time around, and. Issues with getting it done, but. Just needs to be filled in, if approved, and then at the November meeting, it could. Then move from Angela to Angela to Para. With your blessing.
Sounds good, well, I. We could, I'll give that to Angela after the meeting, and filter out the agenda for next month.
Excellent. Yep.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, dear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Project two oh five, Public Works, um. Excuse me. Um, at our budget meeting, uh, we discussed the replacement at the city shop. Um, the proposed design and estimated cost per square foot, um, are attached for our review and discussion. Um, I would look at us moving this to a workshop when we discuss a couple of other things. So we can spend a little more time. Discussing what we're gonna, how we're gonna proceed. That's okay with all of you. Were there any other questions on Darren's, um. Darren's report or anything?
Maybe you want to mention a little bit of lead and copper thing, or if you want me to? Just so the comments as well, we're, we're, we're gonna steal it with right now.
Uh. Darren, uh, sent in ten samples to the state of Minnesota, which was. Under this whole. Water tower thing, right?
Water plant.
Water plant thing?
Yeah.
Two of them came back with high lead readings. One of them was in the parameters of being okay. But the other one was accelerated. So we had a meeting with, um, Minnesota Department of Health this morning, and, uh. We're gonna have to broadcast it. And Darren has to make a new site plan, and he will have to pull twenty samples. For the City of Osakers from January through June of next year. Um, Eric Meiser was on the call with us this morning. Um, Darren and Eric, I think, have, have the same. Feeling that. Um, since they are in this last phase of the. Water treatment plant. They're getting some leaching. You know, the water from the, from the tower to, to the residence is fine. But once it hits the residence, they feel there's some leaching off of maybe galvanized. Or what else was it?
Lead lines.
Lead lines. Um, and we should not have a problem, but it does, like I say, it does have to be broad, yes, so.
That's gonna be.
And he actually decided they're gonna go to work on it.
Yes, yep, I talked to Darren this afternoon.
He's giving everybody a flyer that says that this potentially happened. Unfortunately, most of it relies on plumbing in internal homes, so you can't necessarily do a lot of that, but with our. Lead study, we had, did two lead lines, I think he said, and eighteen gallon lines, so those are ones that are more likely to have that in their homes. And so, of course, then they say you need to test these homes. The two that tested high, the people already knew they had high tests, so we don't drink the water that. Have in our home, but. We're required to notify it because of the level, or the two out of ten that got, I'm probably still.
That'll be good.
If you get questions.
Door to door, that's, that's what it is gonna be, maybe it'll lose our water, they just.
And just, what I was gonna say, and in reality, of these ten samples. If that one that was red, elevated, hadn't been there. It would have been fine, the other one was up just a little bit, they, they would have just kind of, that was in the parameters, I think, they said.
These are just random samples throughout the city, or?
Well, since, no, because we did our lead and copper. Test, this last fall, the state required you to do that, they have then told us you have to test the homes that have this lead and copper. Home, so you, before it was a random, we need ten people to do this, are you home today, Randy, tomorrow morning, can you just do this sample, you have to let the water sit. You have to do the first thing in morning, then Darren stops when I get the samples, it's just part of the test, or now it's, they want you to focus on those people, but. Part of why we did the water plant is, remember, we have ammonia, which does have more corrosive attributes, and that's why I went to a biological plant, because it's gonna. Change it, and we were talking this morning, that they've already noticed the difference with the water plant, the water, because. You have to feed other chemicals in there because of that ammonia. Which we can't do anything about, because it's in another groundwater, that's how we get to this biological. So. Here, uh, letter has both Darren's and city hall's number on it, but if you could call us or questions. Reach up him, understand, and do all that we can do. Make sure it doesn't hit like that, but. I think if they would have done this test in another month, had the plant was fully operational, I don't think they would have seen. They did it right before, so.
And Darren said something about the highs and lows.
Darren said something about the highs and lows. There, I didn't find out after, but he was gonna ask where they took that sample from?
Yeah, I, I know this migrant phone call too. He was requesting that we do a new sample.
That seemed crazy.
It was crazy. It was crazy high. And the state said, nope. Once is it, that's what you got.
He can, he could do his own sample, see if it continues to be high, but it's not gonna go against the testing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then there's like, you gotta sort of the radio and everything?
Well, it's either door to door, or you put on the radio and broadcast it. And he's choosing to do door to door.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, he's just gonna give it to every person that way. If he runs into people, he can explain it, so. Understands.
Again, Eric's group saw that the sign for the plaque was put up by the rock out there and turned out nice and condition. He's still teaching. Wasn't real nice, coast really lax there. They appreciate that that happened, so. Thank you for the advice.
Project one ninety seven. Pay application for Eagle Construction. Number twenty includes reducing the retainage to two point five. Substantial completion was established on nine twenty two twenty five. Total of fifty six thousand seven forty four ninety six and a Euro. One four four three for twenty five, or twenty four thousand five sixty nine ninety. We just need approval for those payments.
Motion to approve.
So. Motion is made, seconded to approve Eagle Construction invoice number twenty for fifty six thousand seven hundred and forty four thousand? No. Fifty six thousand seven hundred and forty four dollars and ninety six cents and Euro invoice one four four three for twenty four thousand five hundred and sixty nine dollars and ninety cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We met on, oh, project number four eighty nine, main lift station. We met on June twenty, September twenty second to discuss the main lift station project gives. We approved the award for the main lift station contract to Kilmer for five hundred twenty three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And we are looking for an approval to proceed, to sign a notice to proceed for Kilmer electric. And then Euro has a bill to be approved.
I'll make a motion to approve to send a notice to proceed for Kilmer electric.
Sorry. Motion is made, seconded to approve to sign the notice to proceed for Kilmer electric. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I will also make the motion to approve the new engineering number one four four two in excess of the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
Motion is made, seconded to approve Euro engineering one four four two in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Project number four 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 dash four one nine, wastewater project I nine and M B C A.
Can I speak to this one?
I would appreciate that if you would.
So I talked to Eric about this. So he gave this to me the ninth hour, getting my taxes ready. And I literally put it in there and didn't leave it. And I told him, I think we need a little bit more discussion with this before the council approves it. He doesn't disagree. If you look at the back page, you can look at the bottom cost on here. This is just engineering. And you know, until we get the step pass four, can we submit to the Department of Health or M B C A, excuse me, for funding to see what we get funded on? He thought if we waited a month, it wasn't gonna hurt anything for this deadline. But I think we just need to, or I need to explore a little bit about financing of this because we don't have those funds in our sewer plant. We've spent a lot of our money on our lawsuits, unfortunately. And now these requirements are, you know, because of our timeline. However, I said on all these meetings too, and when we set up this timeline, I said, well, what happens if we don't have the funds to do this? Well, then we talked about adjusting our timeline. So I had a call into this. Not broadly, the guy from M B C A anyway. Didn't get a call today, but I wanna visit with him about like how we can make this work in minutes because you're doing the main lift station. You're doing these lateral lines and all those inspections that we're doing this. It's just so much that how are we paying for all of it at one time? And they can't expect us to do, I guess, all these things and pay for them when you don't have the cash to it. They're, they're telling us to do these things. So I wanted to give a little bit more time to researching that to see and can we push some things out a little bit more so we aren't tied up so much with one thing at a time? So you can read through his report. I mean, he has given some good information as to why we're doing it. One, one set of it is the I N I issue we're having in town and these lateral lines. The other set is some treatment that they have there, which, you know, when we talked about it, Darren was there too. And he said, you know, the wet year we had, there's some cities that were discharging in between times, so they had nothing left. We did not have to, which means two things. You had enough to hold it, but then also he operated it well. And then he got rid of as much water as he could in the spring, so we weren't sitting there with an extra when we had a wet year. So we could be worse off, I guess, what I'm saying. So I think if the council would just wanna review this for a month and give you some time to look into this timeline thing and then discuss with the M B C A and then kind of some of our funding stuff to see where we're at and trying to figure out how we can make all this work. Perfect. For, so.
Motion to table or more questions?
Sorry.
Motion made, seconded, table. Conversation about the timeline until Angela does some more investigating. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Project number three twelve, certification team. Amber's not here. She didn't text you at all?
I didn't.
Okay. I do know that they are looking at the existing pavilion sitting at Osagi Park and seeing if it is in good enough condition to move it down to the beach. And it will all depend on, there will be a lot of things that are gonna be involved. Is it gonna be okay to move down there? And then she will discuss more with us about electrical connections and installation costs. So I guess we'll just kind of hold off on that until Amber can give us more insight on it.
The one thing I also have, and maybe we can think about it because it's not gonna happen until next year. But someone had said that, somebody commented on social media about a bird dropping down on the pier. So I walked down there.
Oh, it was horrible.
It's, it is really bad, so I think, I mean, it's gonna go in that bay now pretty soon. And I'm sure they'll wash it off, but maybe next year, that's something we're gonna have to look at. Maybe the lifeguards are gonna have to broom it off every day or, I don't know. But I had been down there in a while and I did not realize how bad it was. I would want to go walk down there with people. So maybe. I don't, I don't know whose job that's going to be to do that, but we're gonna have to figure something out or get something on the ends of there because it does not look good. We're learning as we go.
Yes.
So.
Project four forty one, park committee. Highlights from our last meeting, splash pad. We're looking at several different design options and cost estimates were presented to us. Installation typically costs about twice the material costs. Final plan are expected in November and bidding should begin soon. And we're encouraging local contractors to participate in the bidding process. They're gonna park shelter, maybe move to the beach if it's in good condition. We haven't had anybody do any inspection on it, whether it can be moved or not. The bike share program, the cement pad and racks are installed and the system is operational and it is being used. So glad to hear that. Banners, senior banners, fifty six total are expected soon and will be installed in mid-October. There's seventy poles available, so the Osakers banners are gonna remain up on any open poles. And if I could have a motion to approve the minute and then we have a bill from W S B also.
I'll make a motion to approve the park committee meeting minutes from September thirty of twenty twenty five.
Second. Motion has been made, seconded to approve minutes from September thirty of twenty twenty five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the W S B invoice for Park Osagi engineering. For the W S B invoice for Park Osagi for fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety one dollars.
Motion is made, seconded to approve W S B invoice for pole park Osagi engineering for fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety one dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now have the floors open.
Okay, I'll let them. It's happening, but just checking if I didn't see it, we didn't see it, Mark's here too, see it on the agenda. So just checking for the Levine Drive is hopefully M B C was drainage. I really would like it then for the fall, so when spring comes, obviously, that's when we get on the water. Hopefully, we have good drainage then.
Right.
Any answers?
I have a search and I, maybe they, I don't know, I haven't heard.
Yeah.
Besides, they're, they're gonna do it.
Yeah. Can I call them? They'll need one.
I don't think that we're going to move forward. We didn't have the budget by this year.
Not for the drainage, but they're gonna come clear them.
Clear it.
Team works.
So is that gonna?
That, I don't know if that's happened already.
So.
Last I talked to Darren, you said.
We didn't think it.
Someone over in here had been done, yeah.
Yeah, according to the residents, it sounds like it hasn't been done yet, so.
That is. So they're, they're gonna go do this one and that on the same day or the same week or whatever?
No, but you haven't heard of the schedule, right? I mean, I'm just hoping, like I said, which I think everyone knows it would be good to have it done before the next spring. And then when spring comes, we're all supposed to be looking to see if the proxoals and stuff can import that. So I'd really like to get this, but technically, none of us can say, hey, I'll be on the schedule. But that has to only be done by you guys, right?
Right.
Even though I can bug them a little bit maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask Darren again. I wish I had that last month's sheet here, but last I remember, they were, they were coming to do.
Okay, just wanna make sure like we're still on.
Right.
And like I said, it's important before then.
So, excuse me, if I understand, there's another culvert on some other street.
Green Street somewhere.
It's a ditch.
A ditch, and then what's, what's on our end? Is there a culvert or what's, what's going on?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know exactly where it is.
I think it's probably the one over.
It was the one by Petercos and then the one that's the swim, swim bathroom place.
Oh, okay.
Towards Dan's.
So, okay, so both of them, one by our place, the one goes under a driveway, that one?
Kind of in the corner when you're turning the corner there. There's like a little culvert that comes out there cleaning up.
Okay, and then there's?
And then the one over by Petercos.
Petercos and Jopians there on that.
I don't know for sure. Is there drainage, drainage, how that goes into that culvert or what it is? Is it just coming out of that?
I think it was just the sediment that was. You know, over the years, the sediment kind of backs up and makes it higher, so it sits there and just cleaning out that part. It's like my understanding, he wasn't really did you know the whole thing?
No, just trying to clean what's there.
Yeah.
Because over the years, like you said, it's like. Okay, so I just wanna make sure like, I know, stone.
Yeah, I will call Darren.
So, or even if they drive by, I can ask them?
Yeah, for sure.
And if I can add one thing. Understand our people who live at our point of view, we've been at council meetings since February. And our hope was this thing could get resolved this year. And so I understand budget constraints was now. And I do appreciate what's been done so far. But I don't wanna be sitting here a year from now and nothing's been done. So we need to very ask you to get on it as soon as possible in the spring. And get it done. I've looked there twenty years. And it's been a problem all that time, so. Thank you for listening to that. It's, it's just disappointing, but that's how things are sometimes. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else? Thank you for attending and we will have Garrett or Tim check on that for you. We'll move on to project two oh three, snow removal ordinance.
You know, what can I just say one thing, as long as it's being.
Yes.
If Tony couldn't be here tonight, but the trunk or treat, October thirty first downtown. Just as a reminder that the road will be blocked off. If kids are encouraged to come from three thirty to five o'clock. The trunks will be out and downtown businesses are encouraged to dress up and, okay, so.
You have to have a resolution blocking three?
We did.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
It's good to know, kind of, so it's good to know.
Yes, just a reminder. Just a reminder.
Now you're not gonna. Just wanted to make sure.
That was it.
They wanna get trouble.
Oh, the snow removal ordinance, the snow removal flyer. Angela has attached copy for us to look at. It was adopted at the September meeting and it will be in the newspaper, on our website, Facebook. And we did include it in the newsletter that will be coming out.
Yeah.
Residents may have questions. So we will try to communicate it to everyone, so everyone's aware of the enforcement that will be starting this winter. And if you know anyone who is willing to has extra snow removal equipment or whatever that might be able to get us, get on the list. I haven't phoned anybody yet, but I'm gonna keep looking, so.
Do you want them to call like city hall to get put on the list?
Yes.
Or we should, okay.
Yeah, in fact, on the flyers in the blue that shows. They can email it to.
Perfect.
Yeah, somewhere. Both of them. I smell.
Isn't it on there?
About the same, so.
Oh, by Freeze Stop and Sand, yeah.
What do you want it to say? We talked about it there and it was like, yeah.
I know.
Well, he's the one, everybody go, I don't know, put the buckets in, I'm like.
And then he showed, he just shows them where it is once and they're gonna take.
Well, yeah.
Twenty five buckets are over there.
Yeah. Well, how many people are gonna be there behind the shop?
Yeah.
It's the best. Somebody has an issue, we'll help them out. How's that? Or Laura will help them out.
Girl, I'll put it on sale.
Project two sixty one, water problem. Mr. Gagnison was at our August meeting regarding the water issue on the property at two twenty six Central Avenue. Angela has come up with some some different ways that we can address this. I've kind of looked it over. And. And I don't really know what to think. What would be the best way to try and approach helping the problem?
Issue comes in as it's all private property.
Yep.
We can have some type of easement or dedicated property to do it, but just to go do it for private property, it's not necessarily the best thing we should be doing, I don't. If you have the water, you can clean up that whole thing, make it drive a moment, pass a little parking, but.
Well, I think part of the problem that we run into is, like, I think he was saying when he was here, that they own all the way up to just outside of the fire hall, so.
Yeah, in reality, in reality, it's not true, we like a lot of people use it.
Right.
And it was paid part of them where, where we own.
So they should, so realistically, the owner's gotta petition us to fix it. Then they have to give up some of the property. Kind of how I see it, if you, if you go ask them, they're gonna want money.
Right.
They wanna fix the problem, then they come to us. Situation, but we got quite a few of them that it wasn't the same. I really wouldn't think that anybody would be upset with giving them or giving us that roadway, but you gotta, everybody's gotta be on board with it. You know, one that's having the most trouble should be asking the other owners to join in them.
Yep.
So basically, item number one is really what.
That's kind of my gut, but.
Do you, I mean, we're friends with the Danielsons, I can reach out to him if, if that's.
It doesn't really sound like it's their problem, it just feel bad, it's their, not the others.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know.
Well, it's running down everybody else, but maybe if he's passionate, but he can get his neighbors to say, maybe to do something about this. And we all get together and say, we want you to do something.
Sure, we're certainly.
Give them options.
Yeah, and we're certainly hoping to it.
Yeah, for sure, but.
Rather than the neighbor who's sandbagging that monopoly that took the water out.
Right.
Do you want me to miss out with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was, I'd be great.
Two for you. Yeah, I'd be, I think that's we have a lot.
Thank you, Laura. A couple months ago, I mentioned crosswalks, and I know that Cal reached out to Douglas Tony. Um, as far as making the wide where they etch it in, so it's more defined, probably the best way to put it. Um, and the company that did it for Alec, um, it would cost six hundred and thirty dollars each. Well, by the time you figure that's twelve hundred dollars an intersection, and we've got four intersections we wanna do, for sure, we're up to five thousand dollars. So I was driving into Alec the other day. I went to the hospital to visit my sister, and I saw these signs. These signs are a hundred dollars a piece, are they worth having something like that? Or, or are trucks gonna get?
Yeah. We're, we're.
I was trying to have, we have them at the school earlier.
The schools look pretty rough, the ones that are right up here. Which is super sad. Like, the things that are very sugary, unfortunately, but, I mean, and it's great because the, the ladies come out with the crosswalk, I mean, they drag them out, set them out right in the middle, so it is very visual to see it right there. Definitely, but it's just awful. I mean, I would say winter is gonna be tricky because of.
I was gonna say, we want water out there. Yeah, we want water out there.
That's what I'm thinking, the schools. They're also a little tricky.
Yeah, I would say in winter time, I don't think we'd be resiling at all, you know, because of all the things go ahead in winter time, um, but I don't know for.
But that's when we need it just as much, I mean, that's tricky.
And that's true, you know. Um, I'm just looking at it, I don't, you know, we got it, we got it. I know that crosswalks are important, but we have other things that we need to do too, so do I wanna spend five thousand dollars to have an etched-in crosswalks?
And they're really gonna help.
I feel like this is a good start, I mean, to see if it's helping.
But everybody knows there's crosswalks at the corners, I don't think that's the issue.
And you can put like a blurb in our newsletter of a good reminder of watching for pedestrians, watching for children, especially at those.
No passing at the corners.
Yes, like critical times when you're.
Hold the law.
Walking to school or back from school, and then you throw sports in there, and then it's super weird times, but. Well, I feel, I don't know, I feel like people who are actually reading the newsletter are probably obeying, so.
You've probably heard it.
I mean.
Put something in the list, I want to.
And we're gonna have snow before we have spring, so, you know, it's just an idea to throw out there, but it's something that I think.
Are these pretty accessible to get?
Yeah, I had Darren check on them, yes, you can get them just about anytime you want, like I say, they're about a hundred bucks.
Well, maybe we try it this spring, throw a couple of them, and especially on this busy road. For when the kids are out of school, something like that gives them at least, some people hopefully like, hey, this is a busy crosswalk.
Yeah, I'd like to say I, it will help, I don't know, but something, something to think about, I, you know, because I've had a couple of phone calls about crosswalk situation. I wish there were a really good, solid answer, there's not, unless you put up lights and.
That was my ambition, but they're expensive too.
Yeah.
Not a long way to get people's attention. We tried a little, what we did put up, we tried it in, people have driven by, it was like everything.
Yep, so, we'll give it a shot, we'll keep this in mind, pick it up again.
Okay.
Late winter, um, make this up to, you might see something in the meantime, say, oh, this would work.
Maybe we should put it, it comes into the next one, maybe we should put it on our wishlist on the gambling list.
Well, we sure could.
Let me put it back on the gen in March or February?
Oh, I think March should be fine, because if we decide, if we decide to do this, we'd have them like, you know, maybe February, because if we decided to go to the wide, um, etched-in ones, we may need to have leave time.
And they would, would we need two after each one, and we just do one?
I mean, of the, the real.
The white, no, the white, the white, yeah, but I still don't know that's a.
I.
If I tended to where they see a very flawed line, but that's, we'd be invested. How much, oh, uh, how long does it last, if they say?
Three years. I think that's what it said, about three years.
So is there a maintenance deferral? Pan, that's what I was wanting to.
So, if I had to spend five thousand dollars in three years from now, what do you do, you, you know, how much does it cost you to bring them back up to what they should be?
I suppose it'd be cheaper because they wouldn't have to.
Just cancel it.
The cement, I don't know, I see. They're not, I know, but. They drive that out there to them too? Yeah.
Well, like I said, we'll put it on our gambling wishlist and we'll think about it, yeah, put it on February.
Okay.
I still like the stoplights in St. Cloud, I really think that's the only way you're gonna make it.
I know, but because we have enough money for that, I know.
Just get a bridge. Either the bridge or like the underground tunnel.
Oh, I don't know if you are familiar with Highway forty-five, the old past, um, the old taste, really simple? Hey, when, when you're coming from eighty-two and going to twenty-seven, oh, I know, about maybe a mile, there is where they have the underground walking paths. They don't use them, you'll cross them, that's your way to it. I don't know how much money they spend on those underground walking paths, but people don't use them.
Or scary, don't we?
Yeah, it's cool.
Uh, uh, project one ten, gambling, um. We are looking at having a gambling meeting, um. Would you guys be available for October the twentieth at five thirty?
I put it on my calendar already.
I think that's just.
There's something else I couldn't have found earlier. Did you get an answer from everybody?
Yes.
Next Monday.
Sure.
After EDA, your eyes of EDA.
No, that probably. So we'll, we'll just do this and.
Okay.
And I'll come back next week for EDA.
We do the works of all you're talking about.
Yeah, I'll talk about that in a minute, um. Topics, I've already put down the sidewalks and crosswalks, um, I wanna mention Park Osagi. And, um, I am gonna get that diagram chart done for West Central Initiatives and get that to by sometime this week. So we'll have it before the meeting to talk to, um, have a handout. Then maybe we can, if they have access, maybe we can get some to put it to us, Central Initiatives or EDA. And if there's anything else you guys want to add to this wishlist. Don't have to tell me right now, but maybe think about it and we'll discuss it before the meeting or send Angela, no one she can let us know.
Yeah, so I can get it on the agenda.
Okay. Project one ninety-six, the fee schedule. Oh, I know the department heads have, um, have received their schedule and are reviewing for feedback to us, um, I've started looking through this. This is my first time with doing anything with fee schedules, so, um, any input from any of you guys, if you wanna share with me at any time, doesn't have to be tonight, would be just great.
Um, the only note I had on that was, um, later on in the agenda, the building inspector raising their rate. I think maybe it wouldn't hurt to be passing that rate along in the fee schedule if it's, you know, it would apply to, I would say, a lot of planning zoning and stuff, but we maybe need to add an extra twenty-five dollars onto some of that stuff to recoup that cost that they're getting us.
Yeah, I would love to update this to approve or go through with the other.
I mean, I, I know I'm kind of getting out of order, but that was when I was reading the packet to, I just haven't known what I'm here to. Inspection stuff, increasing it by twenty-five dollars.
The other note Laura had too is under, the planning zone is a special meeting thing. And I had a hundred dollars, but we do have planning zoning on the page before, special meetings, something else that got put in when we updated all those fees last year. It got included there, so that needs to be removed on. Page three, I think it is, yeah, page three, there's a special meeting, which is only a hundred dollars, which won't cover anybody's wages, so we want to increase that, so I remove it and keep page two. Otherwise, we do it after in January, so just information.
Number, uh, number forty-six, water and sewer rates, EDU. Um, EDA has been discussing, um, in requests of the consequence or implementing availability or access charge for all properties within the city, whether vacant or developed. Um, the EDU, EDA board members expressed interest in encouraging property owners to make active use of their properties in the Osakers. Randy, you wanna explain or should I?
I can.
Have at her.
Well, I mean, the city, um, has paid to have that particular stub, whether it's sewer or water put in. Um, it's there and available, if there would be a house there, then we'd be getting tax income for it and help pay for that. If lots sitting empty, we're not, we're maintaining it, not getting any tax revenue for it, so. We've discussed it with, I think we, the lawyer and maybe Steve, a couple of our consultants, and they said this is the way we can at least recoup some of the money for that, for lots that are sitting empty.
And I think the, a couple things to think about is we, we do have vacant property owners that maybe houses that sit vacant for a long time. That we haven't historically charged them for, because they're not even using them, which I think for sure we should charge them for. The next step is what Randy said, you have, uh, let's say a double lot or an extra lot. It's got water and sewer to it, but you haven't done anything with it, we charge them. Do we have to charge like Hendrick's Edition, they have twenty-four units out there that they could potentially, we charge each one of them, so it might be, if you wanna do this, you have to think about for surely what you wanna see in.
Right. What you want to see. Challenge development, because they wanna pay its fees, it has to be so. Where the legal agreement, it sounds like it's all part of the two, so. Feel like there's a lot of empty lots up to that, we're not, we've provided them services, we're not giving them money for it.
I agree, I mean, I think it's a great, it's great.
And this is one of the things that, from my understanding, the lawyers, it is possible as long as we don't play fair, sort of, keep it equal across the board.
So would be, we would be just looking at like this flat monthly fee for those.
Well, currently in our fee schedules, if you have like a.
Come in here.
EDU, which is.
We have.
Throw water in, it's with, uh, while. For our apartment buildings to stop the water, we're only charging one apartment building, one. So, we, now, when they have one meter or five water meters, we charge them, we've got this preparation there. Am I explaining it right, you're not sure?
Yeah, so if you look at, you know, the bottom of page five, four, yeah, four. We have the water fee, so there is a EDU charge based on four thousand dollars, so this thirty-five ED gets charged to everybody that goes south, comes back here, so they're paying that every month. Um, regardless, if they're using water or sewer or not, now there is a base sewer fee too, because we do have seasonal individuals in the, just get sewer. So you see there's a seasonal sewer, which is twenty-four fifty, EDU for somebody has water and sewer is thirty-five ED. So they're getting charged that whether they're here or not, however, we're not charging like a vacant property that hasn't been in the house for years. And we're not charging vacant property that has nothing on it, so our industrial park, you know, all these empty lots or Hendrick's Editions. Which we could, because according to this, we've supplied them with services and potentially we can charge them because they have that service ready and available for them.
So in order for us to do that, we would have to do an ordinance, or?
We would change our fee schedule basically to say that we, you wanna charge what I just said, but you want to implement it for all all homes, all vacant properties that have either water or sewer stuff, so. We do have some properties that don't have either, and we want to bill, charge them, they have a stormwater fee monthly that we charge, we bill once a year, that's all they get charged, above them beyond taxes, yeah.
So then we just have to come up with a fee to do that, and we could do the same thing as the EDU, right, correct, that's what I would.
That's what I would suggest, if you wanted to push to implement it, the other ones would just be the same, everybody's paying the same.
I'm just wondering if that we got out more, it's not just a fee schedule, just like, or is it considered, if you put it on a fee schedule, we have that.
Um, I can check with the attorney, but I don't think it matters because we already have the EDU language.
Okay.
Um, that we already have with having to set up with rules development when we did that. And you're just adding who you wanna see charged for. So, but I can check with them to verify that question.
Is there another, um, thought I, was, is there a way for us, kind of new development, either postpone it or? My, 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 just off the top of my head, I'm thinking if I had a house on it once upon a time, we, it would, I'm happy to have it, maybe. Like the Hendrick's Edition, they've never built the house there, so I hate to have to scare developer away. If somebody that wants to put a couple of houses where, because they're paying fees, I don't, a house they haven't built yet, doesn't make sense. I don't know if the lawyer, and here it says we got to kind of make it all, all or nothing kind of thing, but maybe the lawyer can help us with some language, it might.
Sure, yeah.
Allow for a little bit of flexibility with a developer company. Build us a house. And if you can't do that, that's, that's like to ask the question. Think the most EDU group is pretty passionate about trying to do something like this, so, I'm good. Think, okay, consider it.
But we can just get some of this, we can unadd, unadd it.
Yeah.
Just sort of have a fee schedule, okay?
And then if we do require an ordinance of that, you know, sample.
For our, yeah.
Great, thank you. Uh, project number fifty-six, insurance. Um, and Angela noted at our, um, workshop, I think it was. The health insurance increased by twelve point two five percent.
I mentioned at the last meeting, a little too far here.
Okay. Um, I know when she did her original budget figuring, she had figured six percent. Because my, my, okay, here's where I feel, I don't know if I want. Depending on what the contract say. I have asked Angela if it's possible for us to stay around the six percent mark and go to a higher deductible. I know she sent, um, several emails, um, one with comparisons. There's no way you can go to an individual insurer, because it's just outrageous. So, but if she's, if we stay within the co-op, that she's currently got the plans through. Um, and we raised the deductible a little bit. We would be, the six percent would be at the four thousand dollar deductible rather than thirty-four you're at now, correct?
Thirty-four hundred, yeah.
I know you got some information in here too about, uh, contracts.
Yeah, well, still a couple of things, just to recap maybe a little bit. When I did my original estimate, we didn't know what rates you're gonna do, so I did do six percent, as Judy said. I found out what our rates were after our budget meeting. It was twelve point two five. I did adjust preliminary budget that you approved to the twelve point two five. Keep it in mind that some of your employees that have insurance are not in the general fund, they're not being paid on the general fund. So what you're balancing ultimately, free levy, it's a general fund. So it's about three thousand, thirty-eight hundred dollars, right, I said, an additional cost. So with that being said, our current plan then is a thirty-four hundred dollar deductible plan. And that's an HSA, so what that means is myself as an employee, if I were to go into a hospital or something, I'd have to pay thirty-four hundred dollars. Before they would cover anything, after that, they cover everything a hundred percent. If my spouse were to go in, they'd have to pay thirty-four hundred dollars, and then they cover everything for us. And then they cover everything for our family, but two of us would have to meet to get the total. So what Julie's saying about increasing it, that would mean four thousand dollars. Per individual, eight thousand dollars per family, or there's another one that's forty-five, and then nine thousand. So it does reduce the fee or the cost by a little bit. They are both HSA plans, which means, um, HSA money can be put in to subsidize that, um, deductible that's there. There is the concern that you do have union employees, it is changing their benefit level, they could challenge it. Not saying anybody's going though, but I'm, just so you're aware that that could be a possibility.
How? The contracts are written with a dollar amount down though, aren't they?
They're all different, actually. One is written with a dollar amount, which is the ASME union has a dollar amount. Um, the supervisor one has a hundred percent. And the police union has a hundred percent with the current plan that's comparable. It has that language in there, so that's, um, saying you kind of give them comparable benefits, however that's done. So like I said, you can, you can make a change, you're well within your right to make a change, but that doesn't mean they can't challenge it either. I don't know if that will happen or not for the amount that you're looking at, but. One thing that I'll just mention, Steph brought up, uh, something with, um, through AFLAC. There's some plans they have that are, Julie can help me if I'm not, not familiar much with them, but like base plans and, um, high deductible or high cost plans, you can kind of get an AFLAC plan to subsidize some of this cost. But there was a fee with that, and some, some of the plan required the employer paid that portion of it. And some employee would pay, and I didn't have enough information, but as I mentioned to Judy today. You know, if you're looking to say, well, we want to go to a higher deductible, maybe you can subsidize something a little cheaper. And then it would help when you have the major medical, because that's what most people are worried about, you know, the major medical, but, um, I'm not sure enough about it to know if that would benefit this time.
Sure, well, really it hurt my employer was the fact that, you know, your current deductibles, thirty-four hundred, four grand, it was a lot less than that. I think it was like a thousand. And that's where I was more intrigued more than anything, because you don't see many deductibles that only that much. And that's much more fitting for families than having these larger amounts. So that's truly why I brought it up to Judy and passed it on to you as well of, hey, maybe this is something we want to look at, I don't, I don't know. And maybe it's something that we just get information of, and it's too close to time crunch now, but at least we can maybe explore it next time. If that needs to be the.
And I didn't know, I didn't talk to our AFLAC guy, um, he said he'd be willing to come in if Judy, you want to sit down with me and we can kind of learn a little bit more about it. But, um, it isn't a qualified medical plan, what they have. But it only matters if they're going to implement these fees or penalties, if you don't have a qualified plan, which was removed when Trump was in office first time. But if that were to come back, then it would not qualify for the plan because of whatever stipulations they had in there. I'm a hundred percent sure of all those, but ours right now does qualify. However, that's set out to qualify, I'm not a hundred percent sure either, because that's on the chat outside of it.
And I guess if you guys are okay with them remaining with, you know, with the increase of twelve point two five, I guess I have, I'm one of five. So.
This wasn't about that, oh, is that?
That I did adjust the preliminary to fit that after I found out.
Okay.
And I did mention it at the last meeting, whether you would rather stay at six, you know, that's, that's up to you to do that. But I do have it covered at this point, um. I think one thing to note is the twelve and a half, twelve point two five, that is the highest increase we've had in, for a long time. We've had six once, otherwise we've had zeros, we've had negatives. But everybody saw it, in the co-op, everybody saw it. So they were saying like the cost of medical treatments is just gone up, that's why it's. It is what it is now, great.
I'm for it, Sharon.
Move forward with what we have.
So, uh, don't we give some money to help with a higher deductible plan?
Yeah, we do, we get.
Gives you some to help with that, right?
Yes, we do get money into an HSA to help offset, that's correct. We had a hundred and seventy-five with checks, that's what you get. So it does get to be a chunk for them.
I guess one, you had your thing, we have this, do we find something in the middle of giving a little more on the deductible? HSA is all, just, there'd be another angle, another red version.
You can have, you can a hundred and seventy-five per check?
Yeah, we have twenties, we have paid twenty-five.
So we're already putting forty-two hundred dollars into an HSA. So we're covering the employee's deductible, no problem.
Yes.
So I, if I asked to have her check to see if we can raise the deductibles to four thousand, are, are you guys opposed to that? Because we're already giving them four thousand dollars in an HSA.
Yeah, that's fine.
You want to check on the contracts and see what they say? Or check with whoever we got to check with?
I think at this point, um, I mean, I, I can check, however, maybe we can talk about it on Monday?
Uh, we don't have.
Because that way, you're not having to make a decision tonight, and I don't know.
Yep.
A complete answer, but in other words, I'd say you probably want to make a motion, but how about a check and then we can have it on.
That's, that's perfect. Project fifty-six, insurance, paid family medical leave. Um, there are two options to go. Um, Angela could, could take care of it right here in-house. And it would be eighty cents per hundred dollars that an employee makes. Or the state of Minnesota says that we can go out to a private carrier who will handle all of that stuff. And Angela reached out to Shelter Point, and they have quoted her eighty cents, um, per hundred dollars of wages. And they will handle the program. So it takes a lot off of Angela's plate and saves us in the eighty-eight cents a hundred to do it that way. Now, of that eighty cents, we can still charge the employees forty cents, so, correct?
Well, technically by law, you can charge them point four four.
Well, no, I, I'd split it in half, I'd, I'd be happy with.
Right, yes. Yeah, that's the max you can charge an employee is point four four. So you could split it in half still, and we'll save a little bit.
I was gonna say, and I'd be very happy with, you know, cutting it in half. Where the employee pays half, we pay half, but Shelter Point then handles everything. If an employee has to apply for payment, will leave, they go to Shelter Point and take care of it, and it's all out of house. We don't have to worry about the time these people have to spend it on it. I think it's a good plan, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, and each year you can make a change, if you don't like, you know, but there are other states doing the same program, so they have to talk.
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
Yeah, have everything set up, so it's, it's already going for them. And it's cheaper.
Yep.
I see you mean it.
Yep. Yep, do you want a motion on that tonight?
We would, yeah, we need to notify the state, we're changing from a state plan.
We'll make a motion to go with the quote from Shelter Point for eighty cents per hundred thousand, or for a hundred dollars. Some wages.
Motion has been made and seconded to, um, move forward with contracting with Shelter Point to cover our PFML at eighty cents per hundred dollars of wages. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Project number one sixty-seven, uh, tax increment. Um, the AEA will be working to modify TIF District one dash five to capture the next two years of increments before the district is decertified in December twenty twenty seven. Um, to allow for this, the district must be formally modified. And, um, you are working with David Downs on that, correct, Angela?
Yeah, they, they will actually do all the programming to make the change, we just have to pass the resolution to start the process. Maybe we'll charge us twenty-five hundred dollars to do that, however, I have applied the source twelve four of our fees, so we should get that coming.
Motion to approve twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five public hearing modification of the tax increment, District one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, calling the public hearing for modification of tax increment District one dash five, all in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Project three seventy-three, personnel policy. Um, it'll be soon. Each department head has received a copy of personnel policy, and they've been to start to, to view the policy and give any feedback on any questions they have on the policy. As of this point, Angela's had no feedback on it.
No.
And, uh, she has gone back to the attorney to finalize the wording for the paid leave.
Yeah.
Part of it, that we didn't have all the answers to what we were working on. So if you want to continue doing that, and if you hear any feedback, let us know. Otherwise, we're gonna hit that dot on thing, it's proving out of our hair.
Um, good to me.
Randy, you're fine with that?
Yeah, you're fine. But like people finally decided, whatever.
I, I was gonna say. We started this when I came into office and it's October, we still don't have it done.
We started it way too early.
I know.
Yeah.
Uh, um, project one seventy-nine, building inspection, just a note that InSpectron will be increasing their fee to one hundred twenty-five dollars in January twenty twenty-six, it is currently one hundred dollars.
So if we were to implement a rental portal, would these people be doing the inspection, or would that Verizon be doing it, or is there no?
You know, that was the challenge the last time. Remember when we talked about Dan Marsoller was our inspector, and he said that he would not do it? He had to find somebody that was trained to do it, so whether Verizon could do it, or you get somebody in staff that's trained to do your inspections. And then usually if you hire outside, obviously they're, they have a fee, but you're, because you're doing it for you, so that you have to recoup that. Otherwise, it's a cost for you, money.
Do you ask this group or is that a fucking annoying question?
I can ask them, I can sure reach out and see if they, they have done that, they may.
And ask Verizon also.
Okay.
And then we put in our fee schedule.
Project two eighty-six, donations. Continuing to feed the donation funds for the Osageas first responders, National Night Out, park assign improvement and care. These donations help to keep programs operating in our community. And the donations are much appreciated, we are very thankful for the community support and generosity that we have seen from everybody. And if somebody would like to approve the resolution for.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty for the donations.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty. Donations to the City of Osageas for the purposes as listed for first responders, care, national night out, and park improvements. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same signs. Motion carries. Um, would you guys be able to do workshop after our gambling meeting next month? Um, would you guys be able to do workshop after our gambling meeting next month? But there was one question, would we have the answer to before? This is personnel policy. Um, the shop building. We wouldn't have an answer to the question about, from the drainage. From Steve at Sourcewell, because your meeting is down.
This week?
It's Thursday.
No, we're not.
No.
It's the twenty-third.
It's the twenty-third.
Because I think MEA.
Yeah, MEA is.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah, okay.
But it's.
Twenty is the starting date.
Yeah.
I could talk to Steve if you'd like.
And that'd be fun.
I can pass a line.
I was gonna say, that way we could probably, yeah.
That'd be nice.
Um. But rather than having to come down twice, if we could do it all in one, one. Perfect.
That would be great.
And then you'd talk about the insurance rate, you know.
Yes.
On the twenty-third?
No. Your planning is going.
Yes, yes. I missed that, I missed the last meeting, so we live on.
Um, is there anything else that needs to be dropped? Not, I will entertain motion to a year. Motion has been made, seconded, during the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.